So this section is entitled Educating the Public Championing the Arts. As some context, Boulder voters overwhelmingly supported the 2A Arts, Culture and Heritage Tax in 2023, showing broad public support for the arts. The arts entertained, but more importantly, they strengthened the community, improved safety, health and resilience, fostered empathy, tolerance and respect for difference, and contribute to the local economy. Boulder's nonprofit arts sector generates more than $115 million annually for the local economy, including significant sales tax revenues to the city, and that figure is expected to more than double when Sundance relocates here in 2027. Yet many residents aren't aware of this impact. So the first question, we ask you, it's just one question per, right? So the first person will be... Oh, we got it, Rob, okay, great. All right, okay, if elected, Rob, would you champion the arts as a core part of Boulder's character and values? And if so, how would you go about doing this?
Yeah, I would. The answer is yes. I could just talk really loud, too. I would champion the arts. One thing about the 2A, 50% went to, say, 50% went to arts. The thing that bothers me is the lack of transparency where some of this money goes. I don't think everybody understands that a very large portion of it went to administrative costs and overhead. That money, it was about, depending who you talked to, 20 to 30% went to administrative costs. That should come out of the general fund, and those money should be dedicated to the arts. That's what the people voted for, that's what I voted for, that's what I expected. And I think we need clear transparency on where this money goes so we can continue funding the arts. And not just pop-ups on grocery haul every weekend, but like permanent art facilities, maker spaces, and installations. Thank you.
Okay, and Erin. Same question? Yeah, no, your question is, "When budget pressures arise, how would you defend arts and culture as essential, not optional, city investments?" Same question, so we have two. Two answers per question, so they both get two questions each? I'm totally confused. The operator wasn't trained properly. Let's go, okay. If elected, I'll just repeat it for you. If elected, would you champion the arts as a core part of Boulder's character and values? And if so, how would you go about doing this? Thank you.
Without a doubt. I think that 2A was, it was great, but I think that it might have been mismanaged. We really need to reach out to the community, and I don't think that the public engagement on it is really good right now. I think we need to augment our public engagement to make sure that people are getting reached so that they know how this money is being spent properly. I'd also like to add that we need to add more areas where people can enjoy these arts in a peaceful way. I'm also championing places like more bike valley services where people can lock up their bikes, feel safe, and walk around the area and see the arts for themselves without having to worry about their transportation being taken.
Thanks, Erin. And the next two questions, or the next question will go to these next two candidates. Matt Benjamin. All right. Not here. And Lauren Fulkerson. So the next question, Matt, is, "When budget pressures arise, how would you defend arts and culture as essential, not optional, city investments?"
Yeah, yeah. Great question. But we don't have to imagine that. We're actually experiencing that right now, and we haven't. And the beauty of that is we got to actually sort of get ahead of that issue by passing 2A. And by having dedicated funds for the arts, the arts got to have stabilized funding that weren't on the chopping block like other departments that don't have the luxury of having dedicated funding provided to them. And that's what's really essential, is 2A got ahead of the financial concerns that we saw and we forecasted many years ago as we went through COVID. So I gotta give our great Boulder friends a lot of credit, gotta give city staff for forecasting that a lot of credit. We were able to see that storm coming and we were able to solidify some funding so that those cuts don't have to happen. Now, in terms of what that foundational means and how we improve going forward, I think as our financial situation improves, as we make investments to strengthen things for Sundance, one of the things we gotta do is just get out of artists' way, and that's where permitting, and that's not a money thing, as it is, it's a process thing, that we can get out of everyone's way so they can lift up those maker spaces, build and do and be creative, and tell the stories that matter to our community and beyond. So it is money, but it is also a process that unfortunately cities are not that great at, and we can be better.
Thank you. Lauren?
Thank you. When it comes to the budget, I know that arts and culture are not optional. They generate major economic impact, strengthen our community, and express our shared identity. Since 2016, the arts and culture budget has grown by 251%, compared to just 47% from the general fund, far more than any other department thanks to voter-approved funding. If elected, I will continue to protect this funding and define efficiencies through streamlining to preserve our other programs. Arts are a vital part of Boulder's story and values. As a member of the Dairy Arts Center board, I helped push for a buyback of the dairy building from the city. That gives the dairy center greater stability and not having to fear constant lease renegotiations and greater control over maintaining its own space. I will continue to show up at events, listen to cultural leaders, and work alongside them to keep Boulder's creative community thriving even in tough economic times. Thank you.
Our next section is on the implementation of 2A. As some background, let's turn to one of the most immediate issues, implementation of 2A. Voters passed 2A with the understanding that funds would directly support programming by arts nonprofits and artists, venues, and multicultural events that benefit the community. However, in its first year and in the 2026 grant budget, a significant share was allocated to internal city staffing and overhead expenses, which the city's general fund previously covered. In addition, the city's budget documents are notoriously difficult to navigate, making it challenging for the community to understand exactly how 2A funds have been spent. So the questions will go to... The first question, section, will go to Monstrat and to Maxwell. And the first question is, I'll read it. "As a council member, would you work to ensure that 2A funds are used as voters intended? And if so, how?"
So I think funds should always be allocated in accordance with voters' intentions. As Rob stated, voters passed 2A with the understanding that 50% of the 0.15% sales and use tax would directly support our artists, arts nonprofits, cultural venues, and multicultural programming that benefit our community. I would advocate for a clear separation between 2A allocations and the city's general fund responsibilities to ensure transparency. This revenue is extremely important as 2A is a direct support for programming and nonprofits.
Maxwell.
Yeah, it seems like, whoop. You did this thing, trust me. You know, we gotta see this one across the board when we're talking to small business owners, artists, et cetera. Over recent years, it seems to be on board with the fact that when voters vote for something, there needs ought to be math. There are, for what it's worth, portals online to follow through the grant funding and where it's going, and to follow through the administrative costs. Realistically, there's always gonna be administrative costs. But still, for some reason, there seems to be a breakdown, and that's probably outreach, that's probably transparency on the city's part, and we just need to be doing a better job with that across the board. A lot of times when I talk to people like, hey, do you know how to find this? And they're like, no. You have to weave through this network of online portals so you can figure out where the money is going. And it may even, some of it, be going to really great places like local artists or grant, staff members might be writing grants for local artists. But if you can't tap into that information, how do you know that what you voted for is going to what you care about? So, I mean, it seems like the biggest issue here is a more navigable system online and all outreach so that people are aware that it even exists in the first place.
Our next question goes to Rachel Rose Atzixor and to Mark Wallach. And the question is, "How would you balance the city's legitimate staffing needs with the priority of maximizing external grants and programmatic support to artists and arts awards?"
So, fun fact, I have a master's degree in public administration and leadership. And to me, when we think about any kind of ballot measure like 2A, we need to consider the fact that staff are really the backing of everything. To me, this seems more obvious, but I think if we need to consider more money for the arts, then we should have considered that an initial ballot issue. I think that that's something that we all need to keep considering. And once again, I think that they are really the backbone of how we get anything done, and that's just something that we need to keep in mind. And if we wanna raise more money for the arts, then we should really do so. I wanna see arts be something that we celebrate. I wanna see more farm-to-table dinners. I wanna see just more collaboration amongst our whole city. We shouldn't be relying as much on taxes, in my opinion, anyway.
Mark.
You know, the issue with respect to arts funding is not the question of whether there are certain allocations that can be charged against 2A. There should be. It's best practice, and it happens in any corporation. The issue is the reasonableness and the size of those chargebacks. We have a charge against 2A funding of $628,000 from the Office and Arts and Commission Administration. We have a charge of $190,000 to establish a 16.7% reserve. That reserve could be established over five years, and the charge reduced over that period of time. It is not inappropriate to question what we are doing in terms of city staffing and the amounts that we're charging back against the money that is available. I will not say to you that no chargeback is allowable, but it has to be reasonable.
Our final question in this section goes to Jennifer Robbins and to Nicole Spear. And the question is, "What specific steps would you take to make city arts funding, and particularly 2A allocations, clearer and more accessible to the public?"
So, in my opinion, in the last few years as I've been looking at the budget, I just don't think that, I mean, similar to what Mark said, that we need to spend a million to give away a million dollars, because grant-making is really what the city does. We have to hold the staff more accountable for the money that is being spent. And one of the things that I've been talking about through this campaign is series of accountability committees, similar to like we have the POP. It's a police oversight panel, make sure that you hold the police accountable. I think we should do the same thing for staff. We have a lot of really smart people in our community, especially in the arts world, and we should be talking to those people to make sure that this money is being spent properly. And that is really a budget decision. I mean, the money and budget is fundamental to the success of the arts here. So if we can have people in the community that are really looking at the budget, making sure that those allocations aren't too high, and that the money is going to the right places, I think that we can make us a more successful community for the arts overall. Thank you.
Thank you. I think I forgot to say earlier that I'm Nicole Spear, and I am a council, so sorry about that. So today in 2025, we have awarded more than $1.6 million in grant funding to 163 organizations, individuals, and classrooms that are supporting arts programs of all sizes and genres in the city. I think it's really important that we are working to balance transparency and accessibility with staff time. It would be easy to dedicate a staff person solely to talking about the impact of all these amazing programs. They could easily fill out a whole week with that. I don't know that that's how we want to use that. So I would really like to understand more about what is, what's feeling like it's not clear and accessible in terms of how we are spending the money, figure out what's missing versus what's hard to find, and then consider how to spread the word around the community. For example, there is a website that lists all of the grants and the amounts that have gone out in 2025, even a little bit in '24. It's bouldercolorado.gov/ grants-awards.
Thank you. It's now time for our elevator pitch question, and this is gonna go out to the following three candidates. Lauren Fulkerson. Maxwell Lord. And Monstrat Palacios. And the question is, "Imagine you're talking to a new resident or business leader, and under a minute, how would you explain why arts and culture are essential to Boulder's future and why this matters to you personally?"
Thank you for this question. As an architect, I study placemaking, how the spaces we create can shape identity and connection. But today, we live in a culture where mass-manufactured consumer content makes everywhere feel the same. Arts and culture push back against that sameness. They give communities a unique voice, they spark connection, and they help us see ourselves as part of something larger. Here in Boulder, our community is hungry for that identity, and people outside our community are as well. That's why the arts are such a powerful driver of tourism and economic vitality. That's why I'm passionate about infusing more creativity into our city. Through public art performances, cultural events, they don't just entertain, they make us think about what we share and our connection to each other, and they are essential to our future.
Yeah, yeah. Or not. Yeah, you know, when I was in high school, I was the, I was a track star, I'm still on the record board. I was the only child from my region to ever qualify for regional math team county, and then I made it to regional state. And my mother still insisted that I had theater, band, and art I had to pick to. And I don't have the opportunity, but if I could thank her for anything, it would be for that. You know, I've been fortunate enough, studied math, to study the ways that make up this world, the existence that we interact with. And I do believe that humming ethereally between them is something divine. And as we march into a more and more secular society, I think that we have a younger generation that's finding themselves devoid of meaning. But when we look into the arts, you know, we see some majesty, and it reminds us that there's something greater and more important to being human, and I think that that's invaluable. Thank you.
Arts, you know, has always been dear to my heart. I have an art history degree, and I've spent nearly a decade in the art market. I've seen how it can inspire, it can challenge, and it connects people. Boulder is already bursting with art and culture, and it's essential that we continue to grow it, not just because it drives our economy, but because it brings people together. It sparks new ideas, it challenges us, and it makes our community.
Thank you. Our next section is on infrastructure and venues. Of course, funding is only part of the picture. Boulder faces significant shortages of rehearsal, performance, studio, and exhibition spaces. Venues are essential for artists and audiences alike, and it is well-known that the lack of available spaces as well as affordability challenges are pressing issues. So our next questions will go to, the first question in this section will go to Erin Stone and to Matt Benjamin. And that first question is, "What role should the city play in addressing these shortages?"
First, the most obvious thing the city can do is to utilize these spaces for art exhibits. City hall, the libraries, other city facilities utilized by the public should be beautiful and by art for sale by the artists. Some city meeting spaces can be rented for a modest fee to performance groups, after-hours, and on weekends. We may not have an actual shortage of spaces, rather, we may have a failure to utilize existing spaces efficiently.
This is a really good question because infrastructure is what cities do. Sundance really has shown a really important light on, one, what we need to accommodate their needs, but also what we don't have, and really started to show where there's opportunities to take advantage of the spaces that we do have. I remember Pearl West was built with the assumption that they would have theaters. Where are those theaters? They're not here. So we need to get those theaters up and running, and that's space. Looking at the Limelight Hotel and the Moxie, they're creating spaces for people to use and utilize. You know, the beautiful upgrades to Boulder Theater, we've got E-Town, we have some great infrastructure. But in terms of what we have, a lot of is empty office space, 30% vacancy rate. Now, while we figure out what the macroeconomic issues that are driving that, whether it can become housing, or different types of office, or be intentional what kind of businesses are there, that space should be used right now in its current form for artists. There's no reason for that to sit idle and empty. And so that's something I've been working on with city staff, is to how do we unlock this and work with property developers so that this space can be utilized at a low cost? It's better to have a place being used than empty.
Thank you. Our next question goes to Jennifer Robbins. And Maxwell Lord.
Take this guy to things.
And the question is, "The civic area includes the underutilized public buildings like the atrium building, senior center, and in the future, the municipal building. Would you support adaptive reuse of city facilities for arts and cultural purposes? And if so, how?"
Well, this is an appropriate question for me because of my role on the Parks Migration Advisory Board. I can certainly tell you that every month when we open public comment and people come in, nobody's ever asking for less space and less services for art. We, as a city, have not done a great job over the last few years of taking care of our basic needs. We have rec centers that are failing, we have loads that are failing, and part of that is infrastructure that can be used to facilitate art installations, performing arts, and right now, the buildings are just falling apart. So we need to do a better job of taking care of those basic needs, and we have places for our artists to go, we have places for our artists and our youth to perform and create different type of installations. There's a group out of Boulder High School that created after COVID, they wanted so badly to just figure out an outlet, and they couldn't, the city wasn't in a position to help them. They wouldn't help them find places for them to get together, and so they went to local coffee shops and started having these poetry slams and these art installations. And that is something that the city should be doing to help, and in order to do that, we need to maintain our basic infrastructure.
Yeah, so I have a shop way out there, and I support a couple of local illustrators essentially by helping stretch canvases. Everybody needs a goddamn table saw, right? And each part of the purpose of my campaign is addressing the issues that we're talking about right now, and that's failure to adequately utilize our spaces. You know, I think that that's one of the most pressing issues that we see in Boulder. And it kind of sounds like a silly little metaphor, you know, Max stretching canvases in the back of his workshop for a bunch of local painters, but that's what it really is, is we deal with more and more economic uncertainty, as the recession becomes harder, we need to be able to rely on each other. That means relying on our spaces, relying on our artists. We're pulling together as a community, and I would like to see better resources managed so that people know where they're able to lean on each other to allow events to happen. That means streamlining some code, that means overhauling some use, but it also means that we have an opportunity to help people with the resources that we have presently, because they're gonna be thin, and it looks like it's gonna be that way for a while.
Thank you. Our next section is Community, Culture, Resilience, and Safety Tax, CCRS. Another word. Another critical issue, this tax referred to as the CCRS tax, earlier around, supported major arts infrastructure investments like the Dairy Arts Center, the Museum of Boulder, Groundwork Arts Lab, and KGMU, but the most recent allocations have been less visible and raised concerns about process and transparency. The 2021 renewal reduced nonprofit allocations and grants to date were awarded through a process that many in the arts community saw as rushed, lacking transparency and guided by unclear criteria. Only 2.5% of the nonprofit funds were awarded to arts nonprofits. With a permanent extension of the CCRS tax on the ballot this November, the stakes are high. Boulder has an opportunity to make these funds both more impactful and more accountable. So the next question will go to Nicole Spear and to Monstrat. And that question is, "In 2017, a Critical Capital Tax Committee helped guide CCRS allocations with transparency and community confidence. Would you support creating a similar committee for future CCRS tax nonprofit funding?"
Thanks for the question. I would not. And the reason is because the 2021 CCRS renewal tax specified that those tax revenues should be dedicated to funding city infrastructure projects with up to 10% to support nonprofits. We already established a really robust equity-focused framework for that nonprofit funding component. It was guided by a cross-departmental steering committee with expertise in housing, finance, arts, equity, and community engagement. It was also informed by council direction, stakeholder groups, and public feedback, and then finalized in June of 2023. So I wouldn't really want to rekeep that while it's still going. I do want to say, because I know we're really focused on 2A and the CCRS tax here, but we've really begun to embed arts funding in everything we're doing as a city, from the Boulder Valley Comprehensive Plan to bus stops, as we do transportation improvements, it is showing up everywhere. In labor, we have a saying, "That sticks in a bundle, don't break." This, to me, is a big way for how we protect arts funding, because when it's embedded everywhere within the city, it's a lot harder to take away.
So I would, just because it increases transparency, it builds public trust, and ensures that our funds are allocated in a way that reflects the community's priorities. I think, you know, data transparency is critical, and clear and accessible information about how funds are allocated would allow our community to hold decision-makers accountable and ensure that the process is fair and equitable.
Okay, thank you. And our next question goes to Rod Kaplan and, one-handed, Lauren Fulkerson. And that question is, "Beyond a committee, what other measures would you propose to ensure CCRS grant-making is transparent based on clear criteria and results in visible transformative community investments, including yours?"
Thanks. When I hear CCRS, there's culture in there, and that, to me, is 25% of that, as far as a voter goes. I'm coming into this from a non-political lens, and when I voted on something, that's the way I saw it. What I would do for that efficiency, these artists are writing grants every single day. Let's put the onus, if you will, because I think they're willing to take it, on them, take some of the bureaucracy out of the city, and let the artists do it. They know how to get these grants, they know how to reach out to the community so that they can also get more funding and leverage what they're doing. I just wanna put the power into the hands of the artists.
Uh, thank you for that. I do wanna touch on one thing that you brought up around putting the power into the hands of the artists. You know, part of the reason that we have more funding for administration in the implementation of the CCRS tax has to do with supporting smaller arts organizations that might not have someone who is a grant writer, to make sure that they have access to the same kinds of opportunities, and so that support, I think, is really critical. But I also think, you know, it is critical for us to have more transparency and understanding about where those dollars are going. Transparency isn't just about paperwork, it's about ensuring that everyone can see the impact. And to accomplish this effectively, we need a clear criteria for decision-making, consistent communication about how dollars are awarded, and public reporting that shows both the spending and the outcomes. We have that, but it is confusing, and I think that there's a lot we could do to help make that more easily understandable for the community. If we want long-term trust, those are things that we should do. Thank you.
Thank you. Time for another elevator pitch question, and this one will go out to Mark Wallach, Jennifer Robbins, and Erin Stone. And just as a reminder, this question is, "Imagine you're talking to a new resident or business leader, and under a minute, how would you explain why arts and culture are essential to Boulder's future and why this matters to you personally?"
Well, that one is easy. Without arts and culture, we're Albuquerque with better restaurants. This is what gives us our identity, okay? And not just Sundance, the entire spectrum of arts in this community. And not just Sundance, the entire spectrum of arts in this community. And to approach somebody and try to explain it, you just need to take them to some of our arts institutions, take them over to Memoka, take them over to the dairy and see what's going on there, and then move on to smaller artists and smaller groups and show them the vibrancy of what we're doing as a community in the arts sector. As I said, this one is easy. If you can't convince someone that the arts are a key component of Boulder's culture and Boulder's lifestyle, then you don't have to be talking to them at all. Thank you.
For me, art is personal. It's my family's livelihood. It saved my daughter during this mental health crisis after COVID. Art drives our economy. It is, it is essential service. We have to stop pitting art against essential services here in Boulder because it drives tourism, it brings in jobs, and it is extremely important here in Boulder. Did you know that the arts funding in Colorado, the state of Colorado, we rank 46th in arts funding behind Mississippi, Alabama, Georgia, West Virginia? So if we're not gonna get that money from the state, we're gonna have to get it locally, and we're gonna have to figure out a way to make sure that this community and this city government understands how important it is to keep us having a vibrant, thriving economy here in Boulder. Thank you.
Arts and culture are essential to Boulder's future because they power economic growth, foster civic engagement, strengthen community identity and improve personal well-being for residents and visitors alike. Boulder's creative sector not only draws top talent and attracts major events such as upcoming Sundance Film Festival, but also fuels local businesses, generates significant revenue and supports thousands of jobs each year. Boulder's arts economy generates $115 million in direct impact annually, supporting more than 2,000 full-time jobs and producing millions in local tax revenue from event-driven spending at restaurants, hotels and shops. The creative scene attracts professionals, businesses, visitors, positioning Boulder as a leader among American cities for creative vitality.
Thank you. The next section is on the city's arts blueprint. Looking ahead, the city is developing a new 10-year arts blueprint to guide cultural policy through 2035. This is Boulder's chance to be bold, to envision what our creative ecosystem should look like and to align arts priorities with broader city plans. The next question goes to Rachel Rose Isaacson and to Michael. Oh, yeah, this is misspelled, Isaacson. Oh, I see, okay. It looks like an R. My lord.
It was like Professor.
This printer is, we're gonna fire this printer. Okay. Let's, we're gonna pass the advocate to everybody.